I get a second certification of my place. All in favor of coming out to the executive session, states of West Bay? All of those states of West Bay? All right, certification of executive session, whereas the Tassel Town Council's convening, section six of this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas two dot one dash three four four dot one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this council that such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, the Tassel Town Council hereby specifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive session to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Tassel Town Council. So I need a roll call vote to approve this certification. So council member Catherine.
Aye.
Council member Davis.
Aye.
Council member Fox. Council member Beasley.
Aye.
Council member Hankins.
Aye.
And council member Flynn. All right, any nays? No, so the certification of the executive session has passed. So now we'll jump right into the first joint public hearing. Notices hereby given that on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Tassle, located at 211 Central Avenue, Tassel, Virginia, 24651, the Town of Tassle Planning Commission and the Town Council will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to the Virginia Code fifteen dot two dash two two zero four, Town Charter section three dash through eight, and Town Code section twenty-three dash one zero one dot two to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to an application for a special exemption permit Airbnb for properties identified by complete number zero nine four Bravo five one one Bravo zero 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 two located at 145 Philo Street, Tassle, Virginia, 24651, and Situate in an R1 residential single-family zoning district. The copy of the special exemption permit application is available for review and inspection during normal business hours between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM at the Town of Tassle Municipal Building as referenced here in above. So Todd, you want to give us a little background on the Airbnb? Chris.
Like you said, it's a 145 Philo Street. I sent out four certified letters, one came back, and three got all of them signed for. Hey, do you have any calls or anything regarding questions to it?
Do you want to come up and state your name? We won't bite, no problem. If you just take your name and address, please.
I'm also Tyler, it's 303 Silver Street.
Go ahead, is the floor yours?
This is my opinion about it, what you want? Me, for my opinion, I don't really like it. It's because it's right there in my backyard, like probably 300 yards to another one, and there's a lot of, I ain't gonna say biker gangs, biker guys there all the time, a lot of commotion and stuff. I just really don't want it in my backyard. If it was anywhere else, I wouldn't look campus like that in my backyard.
That's seriously healthy. It's human nature. Yeah, dear good, yeah, thank you. Anybody else for this particular public hearing? No, okay, so moving on, we'll jump into the second public hearing.
We gotta wait until soon?
Was it, oh, we gotta wait until soon? All right, so we got ten minutes.
He closed this one.
Okay.
Close this public hearing.
Close it.
Yes, so we're gonna, if there's someone else that needs to speak on this issue, we're gonna go ahead and close this joint public hearing and we'll reconvene.
May I say something?
Yeah.
I'm the owner of that property, and it's probably only gonna be rented five months out of the year, you know, maybe seven. And it won't, you know, that's not very, I mean, it's not like 365 days a year, it's short-term rental, you know? I would say max, I mean, this is my first time, so I really don't know, but it might be, you know, max a week.
So can we get your name?
I'm sorry.
Address, address, lot of here.
Susan Sawyers, and my husband Rick Sawyers.
Thank you.
And we've owned that house since 1996, and we've had long-term rentals in it. Those people there, 365 days a year, and they can have motorcycles or whatever they want, you know? I'm also gonna have quiet time, you know, no noise and loudness after 10, 11 o'clock, so, and there'll be a lot of times the house is empty, and we take really good care of our property, so I think we're good neighbors. Thank you.
And further information, all special exception permits are renewed each year at $50 fee. I get a bunch of complaints on the property, done that 12 months, and we don't have to renew special exception permits. It's a process too.
Any other members of the public? Any questions from council? Okay, so we're gonna close out this joint public hearing and we'll reconvene at 7:15 for the next one. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go into our second joint public hearing. So notices hereby given that on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 at 7:15 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Tassle, located at 211 Central Avenue, Tassle, Virginia, the Tassel Town Council and Tassel Town and Tassle Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen dot two dash two two zero four, and two dash one, and six dash two of the Town Charter to take public comment regarding the repeal of existing section twenty-three dash one one six of Article Eight of Chapter Twenty-Three of Code of Tassle, Code of the Town of Tassle, and the proposed adoption of section twenty-three dash one zero zero dot one regarding the issuance of zoning permits for a family day home as defined in Virginia Code twenty-two dot one dash two eight nine dash zero two. A copy of the proposed ordinance repeal, section twenty-three dash one one six, and the proposed ordinance amendment, section twenty-three dash one zero zero dot one are available for review and inspection during normal business hours, 8:00 AM through 4:30 PM at the Town of Tassle Municipal Building as referenced here in above. So Mr. Fox, could you give like a quick kind of overview of what this affects?
Sure, about 20 years ago, the council enacted a, we wanted to deal with family day homes and permits for family day homes, and the code section that was in really should have been reoriented to another part of the code, that's the first part. Plus, there've been some changes at the state level as to how family day home permits are issued to the town. So the best way to accomplish those changes and fix those changes was to repeal the old one completely and then readopt it into the twenty-three dash one hundred point one section.
So do we have anyone from the public that has questions?
What family day home?
I would say Calcare? The existing definition that's there under twenty-three dash one sixteen, and this is probably 2001, is essentially gonna stay the same. So all it's doing is basically reenacting it under twenty-three dash one hundred point one with a couple of small changes, really more nuanced, not anything substantive. There's a definition, we did this two months ago, we changed the code, actually created a definition of family day home for the code. We had all the issues that came up with regard to the possible zoning change out of Ten Castle, and one of the things that was added to definitions at that point in time before that even came up was for family day home, and there were two of them, group home, and foster care, foster home, I think we had in town. It's governed by state code, family day homes are specific in terms of the number of children you can or can't have, in addition to existing children in your own home, and certain limitations that are placed on it before you can get a family day home from then to the zoning district. Everything from having, there's six different point numbers, and when we do the first reading, you'll hear all those things like it comes to have to be licensed through DSS, no motorized playground equipment, you can't infringe on rights of people next door in terms of being able to use and enjoy their property by traffic, problems like that.
Any additional comment? All right, we're gonna adjourn this public hearing and we'll start the normal town council reading in 11 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us in the regular town council meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fascinating, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
I sure will. And if I were, thank you that we have the freedom and the privilege to gather, that we gather to be non-confrontational, discuss business in matters of our county community in a peaceful way. As you just watch over us all tonight, that we be safe and civil, that we get back home at the appropriate time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. So the first item on our agenda is our special presentation request, and this, this is kind of hard sometimes because a man of Mr. Johnson's caliber that has probably, there's probably no one in this room that didn't come across him at some point in time in his tenure with the Town of Tassle and with the Fire Department. He touched a lot, a lot of lives and a lot of people knew him, and I just hope that we came close to giving him the tribute that he truly deserves. So first I want, I want to just play a plaque. That's in honor of Cecil D. Johnson for his 32 years of selfless service on the Town of Tassle Fire Department. His dedication to the community will surely be missed. End of watch, February 22nd, 2023. This going to the Fire Department or to?
TJ.
TJ? Come on up, TJ. Next, I'm gonna read a resolution of honor. Whereas Cecil Dean Johnson served the Town of Tassle Public Works Department from August 23rd, 1977 until September 30th, 2014, where he retired after 37 years of dedicated service, and whereas Cecil was a member of the Town of Tassle Fire Department from September 6th, 1991 until the end of watch on February 22nd, 2023, and whereas Cecil was a special man to the entire community and always greeted everyone with kindness. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael L. Hoops, Mayor of the Town of Tassle, and citizens concurring, do hereby commend Cecil for his excellent community service and present this token of appreciation to Cecil's family with our condolences, adopted this 14th day of March, 2023. One more time. Next is from the Fire Department. To firefighter Cecil D. Johnson, order of promotion. Whereas Cecil Dean Johnson applied and received membership in the Tassle Fire Department on September 9th, 1991, and whereas firefighter Johnson showed good faith and effort and learned the skills of firefighter, driver, pump operator, and aerial ladder operator, and whereas firefighter Johnson became a reliable and able-bodied responder who answered all calls to duty at every opportunity, and whereas firefighter Johnson gained respect among all members of our department and the surrounding departments, and whereas firefighter Johnson became a trusted and experienced senior member to whom both new and old members relied upon. Therefore, upon recommendation and support of the full memberships in honor of firefighter Johnson's service to the department and to the community, I hereby promote you to position as Lieutenant of the Tassle Fire Department. Signed, John Thomas. Chief. And thank you all, the Fire Department, for coming out and showing your support. I know it meant so much to every single one of you. Next on our agenda is a donation request for DECA Nationals. We have Jayden Reed and Terrence Stiltner. If you'd like to come up, give us a little bit about what you're doing, what your accomplishment is.
Thank you for having us today, so.
Hello, council members and friends. I'm Jayden Reed.
And I'm Terrence Stiltner.
And we are your 2023 DECA Nationals attendees. Up first, we would like to give you a little background information. At the beginning of the school year, we decided to bring school spirit back with the creation of board of broadcasting. It was not easy, but we knew our school needed something, a sense of joy and normalcy.
We got this idea from the DECA Nationals Conference last year, which you all and others in our community helped to fund.
So now, once again, we will be attending this Nationals Conference in Orlando this year to compete.
Our total cost for a trip is $7,083. So with the help of you, once again, and others in our community, we are hoping to go, compete, and lastly, bring our land back to our school and community.
Thank you for your time and most of all, your support.
Thank you. So Todd, you're on.
Yeah, Jayden, Terrence, council every now and then gives me the privilege to make good announcements, but after speaking with council, they would like to do the same thing they did last year, and they'd like to match that with $200 donation. And it won't pay for everything, but we wish you the best of luck and thank you for what your accomplishments are.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Need a motion to approve the $200 donation?
Motion.
Need a second? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the $200 donation, states of West Bay and I?
Aye.
All of those states of West Bay and May? All right, so I assume town halls send a check out? All right, excellent, great job, ladies. Next, we're gonna get a project update from Mr. Rick Chitwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, Dave, I knew we should look like that. They grow up fast. Mayor, I have a wish for tonight, I wanna talk about your wastewater treatment plant project, to give you some updated budget information, and would, of course, ask that you would keep it close to your heart, so it's a cost that's with the contractor who loves you to hold it, but. As you well know, Mayor, last year, we opened bids on the wastewater treatment plant. They just come in predominantly high, not only here, but everywhere else in the nation it's happening. At that time, we talked to the funding agencies, and they agreed at that time to hold your money, the funding offer they made to you, for a year to see if you wanted to revisit this, maybe this coming fall. If the market conditions improved, the market conditions have not improved. As a matter of fact, they may be a little higher. I talked to the DEQ representative in Abington this afternoon, Alan Cornet. He said they took bids on the sewer line in Wise County yesterday. It was estimated two and a half million, the low bid was six and a half million. Material availability may be easing up soon, but there are still issues with that. What I wanted to do tonight, was talk to the council and to you, Mayor, to see, our schedule was that we just wanna look at re-advertising this coming fall. Now, we can do that if you, so does that. Right now, if I told you any better news, I'd be lying to you. It's not. A good bit of news is Mr. Cornet with DEQ said, if you wanted to go another year, then you hold your money again, because they fully understand the cost of construction up now. We took the low bid we got, and we looked at the high bid, and we averaged it. That's what this new budget is. On that last page, let me get the specs outside, please. If you look down there at the bottom, the original loan and grant amount was around $10 million, $7 million loan, zero percent, and $3 million, well over $3 million grant. That $166,000 was the money that you would successfully get from the plateau, technical money. I took the updated budget and applied the same proportional 70/30 split that they did originally, in hopes they would do the same thing. It still leaves a high loan line. If you take, now you got a partner in the Tassle County Public Services Department, they own 40% of the wastewater plant, so they're gonna have to pay their proportional share of debt and the operational costs, but if you look over in that right-hand column down the bottom, you see an estimated amount of monthly revenues that you're gonna have to generate just to pay the debt. That's a whole lot of money that you probably don't have in your coffers right now. And one other positive thing about this is, once you actually start and award the job to a contractor, it's gonna take about two years to build it. You don't start your first actual principal payment back to the funding agency until about six months after completion of construction. So you'll have two to two and a half years before, but in the meantime, a lot of community, and I think we did this last time, you took some rate increases based over that period of time. My thoughts, Mayor, just a real consideration, like I said, it's entirely at the council, but my thoughts were, and I wanna applaud the people that work at the wastewater plant, that excellent group of people, you've got a lot more life expectancy out of that plant beyond its design capacity lifetime, it's because of their maintenance and the work they do. For me to stand here and tell you it's gonna last another three years, I don't know. If I could do that, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing, but right now, the likelihood of it having a major problem is probably 30%. I would continue, first of all, I'd look at going another year, and talk, write a letter to them, said I'd like to request you hold your money again for another year, and then maybe look at working with some financial advisors, looking at your rates over that period of time. But also, keep budgeting some monies in your regular budget for things that may pop up that way. I'm not, you know, I can't tell, if a big ticket item, I say a big ticket item, maybe the belt press, it may be a $200,000 repair fix, but I would budget money in my budget this coming year to continue, as me and Fox says, put Band-Aids on it as long as you can until we get this inflationary number down. It just kills my soul to look at councils having their citizens pay twice what it should be to build these facilities.
So across the industry, you see the cost of materials kind of leveling out, they're not going up anymore, the kind of.
The material's about the same, but the availability's getting a little bit better, but the labor, if you can even find a contractor to do the work, the big one, that's another problem we're having. So, but again, Mayor, I wanted to ask, talk to council about it tonight, I know you have some new folks from council, but the sewer plant, I think it's close to 30 years old now. I hope and pray it lends long enough to where we can get some of this. If it don't, yeah, I fully understand. I mean, that's a big money monthly type of revenue you got to come up with, and to hit the tactic users all at one time, it's just hard, if not impossible. So maybe if you could take a little time over a period of time and be looking at that. If it comes in under this, great, if last year you might not wanna be looking at rating, you just say we don't need it. So, but I think you better off to plan, look for that. I hope that gave you the worst case scenario, so. But I'd be glad to try to answer any questions the council may have. I wish I knew the, I wish I was a genie, knew the right answer, but it's just a tough market right now.
It's pretty volatile everywhere. Is there, council, do you have any, any questions? We kind of knew it was a bleak situation.
Yeah.
We're going into a budget work session, and it's just, this is not just this project, it's other projects.
It's, there's everything going on, not only just you guys have a, it's sister towns, originally, everybody's having issues. So, but I'd be glad to do whatever council would direct me to do.
I'm definitely sure we'll be discussing with Todd.
You know, we raised, just for the record, we raised rates for three consecutive years, and we've been moving those funds over to LGIP, so we're in over for a half a million dollars, and we'll, we'll continue to feed that. Knowing the plant and the operators, I feel very confident for another two or three years, anything that happens within that time because of that, that service allocation, it is a sum of funds that we can use, and we, so I feel very confident it's the right thing to do.
That's very, that's good, and we've got that fund to satisfy.
If we were to have a major failure such as a belt press or something, you know, major cost, is that, these upgrades, are they replacement, or are they, like, will that, say we had to replace a belt press, would like a belt press be, would that reduce this cost by two?
Any improvement you make, now some of it down there, Joe, you have to just temporarily make because it may impact a big fix.
Right.
But anything you do, we try to make sure it was a permanent fix to where you don't have to go back and redo it. But keep our fingers crossed, hopefully you'll get by, and you've got a wonderful staff, they do a great job down there keeping it going. It's a tough atmosphere. That's one of the best belt presses in any sewer treatment plant in Tassle, and we do have a maintenance program set up on it to try to retain it's quality. From time to time, we have had to replace bearings and all of these stuff on it, but it's top notch belt press, I can see it go, but you'll end up building what's built around it, so.
Yeah, right. Volume, though. But I guess that's what I was asking, though, if, a lot of these expenses could be used towards it, but there are upfitting that some things would still have to be replaced, even if you do not change this much.
We're still very capable of replacing blowers and blowers, and doing just about everything at that sewer treatment plant that needs to be done. Only situation where we would be impacted to have to look at LGIP is if we had a crack in one of the basins or something. Very unlikely, I mean, it won't happen. Very unlikely. I mean, it won't happen.
Oh, yeah, it would happen. One of the questions we had brought up when we were talking about water sewer budget was, and this is broken out into part A, part B, part C. Would you recommend or advise against taking on this project in any increments?
You know, that's a good question. We looked at that when we first started, Todd, and we removed about two and a half million dollars, what we thought we could, yeah, upfront. And it got down to the part to where we felt like this is basically what we need to do. And DEQ worked with us on that, so we told them we just didn't have the money. We didn't feel like upfront. And I don't remember what all we removed, it was about two and a half million dollars for the budget. I think exactly what we got right now, probably the bare bones, if you try to get by with it.
And you would recommend doing that piece meal?
No, I think it'd end up costing you more in the long run. But that's a good question. What about the, now, at the sewer plant, I know there's, let's see, a schedule. The operator, main operator is scheduled three or two.
What is it now?
The boss down there.
Class two.
Class two.
He's a class one.
Class one, class one, I'm talking about class one. He's explained to me everything's running fine down there right now. I've already talked to him. And, but if anything goes down like a pump or something, does that? And like Todd said, I think you have the capability, especially you've got the money in the bank to be able to buy something like it, but you also have the capability in-house with your staff. Your folks can do a whole lot internally to save a whole lot of money.
We work on the PLCs down there. We've got good, we still have a good relationship with Tim Taylor, who we is and work with PSA when it comes to the PLCs, and he helps maintain, maintain those down there. But when it comes to motors and pumps, we replace those as necessary in half man, always have.
Like Todd, major crap or something, and truthfully, I think DEQ, on the enforcement side, not the funding side, if something like that, they, they fully understand what's going on in the market. They would also work with you. So what my biggest concern, we're on the headwaters, Platteau River, we've got the vast tier share of treatment, you've got some very tough discharge limits. My concern was, what if you start violating them? Are they going to come up here with a hammer and try to beat you up and fines? I don't think they'll do that. I can't promise you 100%, but I just don't think they got, they understand the math atmosphere and what we're vice versa.
That's one of two strings in common, though, of an Indian, an Indian danger.
I just basically, we changed it. We're looking at two, the castings and stuff. I think you have to handle them, handle them pretty good from what I've heard. It's not causing a whole lot of problems at all. Now, I hadn't got into it like today, you know. The last I heard, it was working pretty smoothly. I think Mr. Taylor was helping doing some telemetry and controls to help with the flow and different things which makes a big difference. On your water, same thing. I hadn't talked to Ms. Ward with the Health Department about holding their money, but we had a three-phased approach on that, if you remember. I know some of the other members who were there. I'd recommend, let me and Todd call Ms. Ward, see if she'll give us a little more time. Maybe in phase three, they awarded the town a two and a half million dollar funding package, 1.2 million grant and a 1.3 million dollar loan with the PSA that brings paid half of that loan. And it was going to be over a three-year cycle. What I'd like to do is, we're coming up, if we can hold it another year, at that third year cycle, hopefully she'll have all of the money and we can build assets and say, "Look, we want to go from point A to point B. We ain't got enough money to go from point A to point AB," you know, so, and see if they'll do it. Because a hundred dollars don't go like a hundred dollars here. But that would be my recommendation to council, if you saw a fear about him, Todd, we'd get some letters out to him and ask him to hold it for another year for you.
Really nice of you, man.
Well, let me ask one more question. You actually said, you know, you gave a percentage of 30% to have a major problem. Do you see, I guess, it's kind of like a rate of increase question. So if we continue this for one more year, I know we're looking at it in a one-year cycle, does that risk, do you see it escalating as, as we continue to push this out? And if so, how many years do you see that you could forecast this being pushed off?
You know, the longer you push it out, the more chance you're going to have problems. I think you got probably the good, this coming year, I would be comfortable, but again, with your staff and how they maintain it, to try it another year. If you don't get another year, then we'll regroup, talk to the funding page, see what we got to do. That was my plan. If it, a year, a month later, it's unhappy, we're all re-upped and get on the phone to DEQ and say, "Look, here's where we are. Can you give us a temporary bypass injunction? If we want to bid it, we'll see what we come up with and look at where we are." I would recommend right now, and I think Todd hit a round hood, nobody likes, nobody, including myself, but right now is a good time for you to start looking at your rates and planning because, well, y'all are going to have to have another rate increase, maybe a couple. I know that's a nasty word to everybody, but I don't know how in the world you can afford to build it. You don't have money like that laying around. I mean, y'all don't hold the money, you know, it's, you just don't have another $18,000 a month laying in your free foot for a day.
Here's the irony of that, that's one small project. And as I mentioned, I did a, did a takeoff, and I think it was 297, I sent out the, another grant I'm working on, 297 million dollars. But that's one small project at two million. So, yeah, we want to be aggressive about replacing water lines, and we all do, but it comes at a cost. It's a tough one.
Same infrastructure and your tax base is shrinking.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's sad. And what I like to see, you're working on the water lines, replacing water lines. That's all I care for, is the water lines and the sewer. Well, you know, a lot of folks talk about economic about, and true, but you know, in today's world, Todd will tell y'all now, if you have a business come talk to you, they don't even ask about the water, too. That's just a given. They just go, "You've got a water suit." They start asking about broadband, natural gas flow and all this stuff. But a lot of people don't have the natural, give the water, it's a bad business sometimes. So you've got to keep it in place, you've got to keep it going. I know exactly what Zach's asking, it's good questions. I wished I could give you a good firm answer, but I do think you can get another year out of it. If you don't, let's regroup and see what we have to do.
And we can always, cancel, plan, we can always hire an engineering firm, like one Thompson and Lippin, forget that, to reevaluate that specific question. And it's a, you know, life expectancy of a sewer, sewer plant is X, but that doesn't mean you can't get seven more years out of those. Look at our distribution system. As long as we can keep buying Band-Aids, but they're kind of like driving an older model vehicle. We begin to make the debt certain, you begin to make payments on parts. So, but we can absolutely reevaluate it professionally on an engineering level in another year or so, have another engineering firm evaluate it. It's not even just staying there, we'll look at it, see if it's life expectancy. It's again, I just, just knowing the mechanisms of a sewer treatment plant and what it takes to run a sewer treatment plant, I don't feel like it's anything down there that if it went down, that we couldn't handle with our cash flow we have now unavailable. Of course, if it comes to funds, obviously, mercy happens, you've got to do what you got to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And new members, if you haven't been down there, or given old members, get Todd to load you up in the truck and go down there, learn all about wastewater treatment.
Thank you.
Always good to see you, Rick.
Thank you. We need to have you show down.
Absolutely.
Enjoy it.
So next on our agenda, we're going to get a Tassle Today update by Alicia Bells.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm Alicia Bells, and I'm here this evening representing Tassle Today. I serve as the president for Tassle Today. And I have with me Vanessa Rettigis, she's our executive director. She's going to collect our slides and chime in on all the points that I might miss here. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you to tell our story and to provide an update, annual updates, and quite some time since we've been here, just to talk about our program and our organization, which recently had accreditation, so we wanted to share our good news.
You might need a new slide.
I have, I have a paper copy in case the slides stop working. All right, so Tassle Today, our mission, Tassle Today is a local initiative to revitalize the Tassle Main Street community. It's our mission to develop a warm welcoming center that represents the heart of Tassle and attracts residents and tourists alike through shopping, dining, working, and playing opportunities. See, this is why I shouldn't be on this job. Our vision is, we strive to nurture and share the natural scenic beauty inherent to our town. We plan to restore and maintain the historic landscape of Main Street as a local attraction to engender a thriving commercial and civic area for all to enjoy. And so we carry out our mission by following the Main Street approach by the National Main Street Center. And Virginia Main Street is our state coordinating program that offers services and assistance to communities that are in the Main Street programs. The Main Street approach is centered around transformation strategies that articulate a focused and deliberate path to revitalize and strengthening the economy. The Main Street approach has four points, and that is economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. So we're going to talk about our accomplishments from 2022 and what we do and how we do it. So I started 2022 off with brand new executive director. Vanessa joined us in January 2022. Brand new to our organization, brand new to our community, brand new even to our region. And she did an outstanding job leading our organization through a very challenging time, you know, challenging year, a lot of obstacles and opportunities, and she did a wonderful job. We started with improving our website development. Vanessa came to us with a skillset to be able to work on the website herself, and she added Main Street Business Directory, an admit calendar that included vendor registration online, volunteer registration online, including also donation. You can go on and make a one-time or a recurring donation to the organization and also subscribe to receive email updates. She also created a mini-series to connect local leaders and bigger heads with the community of Tassle, and that was Coffee Break with Jake. It was a crowdfunded adventure video series through the lens of Tassle Today board member Jake Laney. The adventure video project featured local community leaders from Tassle, passionate visionaries, inspired ideas, rich history, and incredible local landmarks. We also completed Tassle Today and community branding in 2022, and these are our logos. And then in May of 2022, we were gifted a rent-free office space with storage from Altizer McGrady French. It's located at 160 Main Street, and this is our office store. The new office has ample space for meetings and storage of our decorations and assets along with a focal point for activities such as setting up in front of our office to sell our merchandise and during events. And then at Christmas time, it was home to Letters for Santa mailbox, which was a fun activity. This mailbox was donated and made by Tassle Today Vice President Matthew Brandt and his wife Beth. Our space also offers us the opportunity to support the arts. We have a flex art space within our office that we are utilizing for photographers and artists to use free of charge. We've had some photographers go up there and do some sessions, and we do plan to utilize this space in the future to host art shows and maybe some workshops. Our board spent a lot of time over the past year working on our organization development and creating structure, a lot of it driven by the accreditation standards and then just some general updates that we needed to accomplish. We updated our bylaws to meet the accreditation requirements. We restructured and diversified our board. We created policies and procedures. We established an orientation process for new members. We established a conflict of interest agreement and code of ethics and conduct. We also focused on creating the Main Street committees that are required as part of the accreditation from the Main Street program. We're still working on this. This is recruitment pitch also. The Economic Vitality Committee focuses on capital incentives and other economic and financial tools to assist new and existing businesses to catalyze property development and create a supportive environment for entrepreneurs and innovators that drive local economies in Tassle. Mayor Hoops is our committee chair. Leanne serves on the committee along with Vice President Matthew Brandt, Vanessa, and myself. I think maybe, yeah. The Design Committee supports the community's transformation by enhancing the physical and visual assets that set the commercial district apart in Tassle. I chair the Design Committee, and Donnie Pruitt serves on the committee along with Susan Reeves, Josh Thompson, Vanessa Rettigis, and Matthew Brandt. And as of yesterday, Violet Asbury will be joining our committee. The Promotions Committee is, it really carries most of the work of our organization. It's, its intention is to position the downtown or commercial districts as the center of the community and hub of economic activity while creating a positive image that showcases Tassle's unique characteristics. The Promotion Committee carries most of the work because this is the committee where the events fall, and we do a lot of events. We have several subcommittees that are sort of dedicated to each event, and they involve many community members. So for example, we've always had existing groups that plan Main Street Moments or Trunk or Treat, or the Christmas Market, or the Veterans Parade. And all of these subcommittees will become a part of the Promotion Committee. So in 2023, we look to expand the work of the Promotion Committee to include some incentives for the small businesses and to enhance our branding campaigns. Uh, I skipped ahead, I'm sorry. All right, our Organization Committee, this is where the work gets done for our organization, and it's responsible to select, supervise, and evaluate the executive director and approve and assisting long-range, long-range planning for the organization. It involves creating a strong foundation for a sustainable revitalization effort in Tassle, including cultivating partnership, community involvement, and resources for the district. Matthew Brandt is our Vice President and Committee Chair, and I serve on the committee along with Karis Vavi, Emily Davis, Michael Hoops, and Nick Hoffs. We also worked on a formal budget and work plan for 2022 and 2023. It's very comprehensive. Todd has a copy of it. You all may see it by now. And our favorite part is probably our events. Want to start by saying we could not accomplish the work that's done with our events without the Town of Tassle, without council along with Todd and Ron, Donnie Pruitt, and the Public Works Team, who are outstanding. They are, they are what makes the events. Chief Mills of the Town of Tassle. Chief Mills of the Town of Tassle officers and so many more people from the Town of Tassle that support all the great events that we host. And then also, we can't do without volunteers. It is essential to our program and our organization, and this year we saw over 50 volunteers that participated in our events. The events are important to us for obviously entertainment, but also for community engagement and participation and support our community partners. We have a couple of events where we work with community partners to raise money, such as recent Polar Plunge, where we work with Plunge Valley Community Action to raise money for their crisis services program. And then another example is our Turkey Trot we use to raise money for Childs to Leave the Food Pantry and also collect food donations. We also provide support to other organizations and groups that utilize Main Street. We work with the THS Prom Committee and we support Prom on Main. They lead the work and we provide support, and we do the same with the June 10th Committee. So these are just snapshots of all the great events on Main Street.
Had not on Main Street.
Had not on Main Street. That's a, that's a, let's make sure.
Yeah.
And new this year, with the help of the Town of Tassle, we helped facilitate operations of the ice rink when Town of Tassle received $10,000 in revenue from public and private admission sales. We offered private rentals of the ice rink. And we also created ADU part-time jobs for teenagers in the community that gave them an opportunity to enter the workforce and have a good first job experience. We also created an incentive program, created purchase incentives for ice skate rentals at the rink to use at our restaurants and retail spaces on Main Street. And we had this idea because the Christmas tree line had to be at Lincolnshire and that pulled people away from Main Street, so we're trying to do something to try to bring people back to Main Street. So we created this incentive program to try to help with that. And then we promoted small businesses regularly on social media, had three new businesses open on Main Street in 2022. And we made a decision as a board for 2022 to waive all vendor fees at our events. This created a risk-free opportunity for the vendors to participate, and we had much more participation than we had had previously. And, you know, the amount that we had gained from vendor fees in previous years was pretty small compared to what we gained in participation. Businesses on Main Street and vendors alike had reported to us that they saw, you know, increase significantly during those events. Go back one minute, so I can speak to that. So we fundraising with local businesses and community members that totaled over $40,000. That was an $11,000 increase compared to the previous year. And then we received $6,000, over $6,000 in direct public support through donations and sponsorships, and that was an increase of over $3,000 from the previous year. And we received $35,000 in grants. That was included grants for murals on Main, banners, new banners for Main Street, along with a feasibility statement. This just illustrates our revenue versus expenses for the year. Our revenue around $119,000, and then our expenses came in at $116,000. And solid green line is 2022, it's really hard to see, but the dotted line is compared to 2021, so you can see a significant increase in revenue. We also sponsored some communication projects. The Murals on Main campaign began with collaboration with local artists and continues in the renovation of a mini park in town on Main Street. We hope that this project be completed in spring 2023. And then we have several other buildings on Main Street that are potential mural locations as well. This is the good news. We did receive full accreditation for 2023, and we are advancing Virginia Main Street community. Yep. And this is the list of what it takes to achieve that. It's really hard to read, but we just kind of wanted to illustrate that there's several different components that we have to meet to be able to maintain accreditation. And often, it's really, you know, it's harder to maintain accreditation sometimes than it is to gain it. So we do an exceptional job over the year to maintain that accreditation. So that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions for me or for Vanessa?
I've got a lot of questions. I can't answer mine. You can't answer them.
Okay.
I'll talk to you later.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity. We appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you guys.
So next is new business recognition. Unfortunately, we have it unscheduled for today. So next, we're going to go into approval of the minutes. So I need a motion to approve the council meeting minutes on February 14th, 2023, the Budget Work Session on February 27th, 2023, and the Budget Work Session on March 9th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes? Stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. Next, need a motion for the approval of financial statements and a financial report from February 2023. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial reports, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. Next is our committee conference updates. Councilmember Davis will give us an update on planning for the Commission Committee.
The planning question did not have a regularly scheduled meeting. However, we did come to the public hearing that we all just participated in, so you all participated in our meeting as well.
So unfinished business. I didn't see anything under miscellaneous. So next is new business, and we've had to add something that isn't on your agenda, but we need to have a motion to, or vote on the approval of the 145 Byler Street Airbnb we just had for the public hearing. So I just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the special permit.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so special use permit has been approved. That'll be reevaluated in one year.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Looks like you would have moved that up somewhere.
Very welcome. So next on the agenda is the first reading, the repeal of existing section 23-116 of Article 8 of Chapter 23 of Code of Town and County. Attorney, my name.
Yes, these are pretty much done in conjunction with one another. The repeal 23-116, strictly based on Chapter 23 zoning article 8, orders zoning fields repealed, section 23-116, family day homes, beater named by the Council of Town of Tassle, Virginia pursuant to sections 2-1 and 6-2 of the Town Charter that hereby repeals existing 23-16 of Article 8 of Chapter 23 of the Code of Town and Tassle. And that basically takes care of the first reading for that. The first reading for the new code section will be also under Chapter 23 zoning article 7, permits and certificates, section 23-101, family day homes, beater named by the Council of Town of Tassle, Virginia pursuant to sections 2-1 and 6-2 of the Town Charter, section 23-6 of the Code of the Town of Tassle, and sections 15.2-2292 and 22.1-289.02 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, that hereby adopts the following ordinance regarding the Town of Tassle zoning administrator's issuance of zoning permits for a family day home as defined in Virginia Code, section 22.1-289.02. New code section will be section 23-101, zoning permits for family day homes. Upon proper application of the zoning administrator for the Town of Tassle, zoning administrator shall be authorized to issue a zoning permit for family day homes as defined in section 22.1-289.02 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, serving five through 12 children, exclusive of the provider's own children and any children who reside in the home upon the applicant's certification and compliance with the following provisions prior to the issuance of said permit. One, operator must be a licensed daycare provider as approved and certified to the Virginia Department of Social Services. Two, no sign of any type should be placed in the yard of the home which advertise the operation of the family day home. Three, no murderized play equipment of any type shall be permitted. Four, operator shall schedule drop-off and pickup times for said children in such a manner so that vehicles coming to and from the family day home cannot impede the free flow of traffic in the area, interfere with any neighboring resident from the access to their property, or in any way impede any neighbor's normal and usual use of said property. Five, operator shall apply for and obtain an annual business license from the town. And six, the issuance of the zoning permit shall be subject to an annual review by the zoning administrator and a renotation of adjacent landowners of the operator's desire to continue operating as a family day home for the coming year. Following the submission of an application for a zoning permit, prior to its issuance, the zoning administrator shall notify each adjacent property owner by registered or certified letter to the adjacent owners less than address of the pending application and of the property owner's right to object to the issuance of the permit. The application shall, the applicant, excuse me, shall be responsible for the payment of the cost associated with the notification. The zoning administrator shall inform said adjacent owners that any objection must be made in writing and forwarded to the attention of the zoning administrator within 30 days of the date of sending of the notification letter. If the zoning administrator does not receive a written objection from any person, so notify within 30 days of sending of the letter and determines that the family day home is otherwise in compliance with the provisions set forth herein, the zoning administrator may issue the permit. If the application is denied, the zoning administrator shall inform the applicant of denial in writing and the applicant's option to request in writing that his or her application be considered by the council at a hearing. The hearing shall be held following public notice as provided in section 15.2-2204 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, the cost of which notice shall be borne by the applicant.
No votes necessary. It's time to have a second read next one. We're voting.
All right, so moving right along. Next, Mr. Day is going to give us an update, proposed cleanup month.
Okay, each year we have a month that we, we do free, we do free pickups across the town. We will advertise on Facebook and town website what we do and don't pick up. We do this every year, so the recommended month, based on workload, it's the worst month, but it's May.
I thought it was going to be maybe up to April.
We can do it. It's historically been in May because everybody, I mean, April's raining and people aren't getting out the garden.
It's raining now. She picked up rain or snow in May or April, but I thought it's going to be in May.
We can do it in April, except y'all, let's just hold it up.
I said leave it in May. It's always been May, hasn't it?
Oh, leave it in May. That's what I'm just, you can't speak, you can't do that to you.
Not sure what the difference between April, May is, but.
The national cleanup month.
Yeah.
Oh, national, oh, okay.
That's what I was getting ready to ask. Let's make sure those stipulations are tight so Donnie's guys aren't killing themselves.
One truckload or whatever.
Well, what we'll do, we won't use the chip. The chipper can take truckload, 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 truckload to fill up in the time soon. So what we'll do is put this unit on truck and you get one load for it.
Yeah, but if you're not that busy at all, somebody's got something else out there to be picked up the next day or so.
I think we have a fee for that, right? Fee for a second load? Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Yeah, I don't want to be.
We can't be taking 10 loads.
Yeah, we gotta pay for those trash trucks somehow. No, I won't. I'd be an ass tonight.
I'm an ass tonight, I'm just saying that.
What?
One, if you have spare pressure, have a load and other loads, you're gonna come back and get that, the rest of it.
Then you pay for it.
That's why we just buy, they schedule a fee.
What's the fee?
I can email it out. I can email the schedule out.
Does that include businesses?
We've not had a candy business, but it's just one of them.
One day I'll get all the way around.
I, I just want to make sure, can't, I mean, if you want to do.
Oh, they want their bag, they want their.
One load. Any additional is the fee. Donnie, one. Kill us all.
How much is the big May? Clean up?
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of making May the cleanup month for Town of Tassle, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, we'll start cleaning up in May with one pickup.
Is there a specific date? I didn't ask.
It's the regular.
We'll send that condo to Matt's schedule. It's never locked out of, so many exceptions. We, we put some corners.
So next on the agenda is, Todd, you have some questions about the time capsule.
We do, as Council aware, we're, Sharon Thompson is getting ready, contractually, I think, we're getting ready to square up with her, but she's getting ready to possibly start construction, which will include putting in storm drain lines just outside of the shared wall there. But there are the time capsules located right there. And I had input last year from Tassle Today to turn it into maybe just a green space. So there's a, but I just want to be sure the council does not have a preference on where, if we are going to move that time capsule.
So do we know how old it is? Do we have a?
We were talking about that.
Charlie Green was mayor. Jack Harry was vice mayor.
2001, 2012.
So it makes it 21, 22 years old.
We're gonna have to move it temporarily.
So.
I think it's Harry, Jack Harry was.
Vice mayor.
Vice mayor, Tom.
But he became mayor when he started this up here.
I tell you what, just as a recommendation, we're gonna have to move it.
Right.
But we'll, we will relocate it temporarily while construction's going on. And I'll talk to all of our partners that have input on the green space and come back and let you guys.
Do we know where we're going temporarily? Now, is it something that's in case that when you pull the block up?
I'll let you know.
Fair enough.
I'm not too sure to be honest, but I'm not sure.
It's a case, that was a case that comes.
Yeah. When we were doing the playground, Richard found one where the old playground was, and I think it's still sitting in his office. But, okay, so carrying on, so you'll talk to us about that later. Next is a donation request from THS Prom, Mayor.
Okay, you've got a donation request. We get this each year, Prom. Last year we did 500. I think after talking to the council, you had a recommendation to do 500 again, and we still voted for it.
Motion to donate 500? Second. Any discussion? All in favor of donating $500 to THS Prom, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay.
I'd like to request, Mayor, that I do a little additional homework on F and G. We'll get back to you at a later date. And also, the other request was from Skills USA. After reviewing that and referring back to what we did last year, felt like a $200 donation was well fit for that.
Motion to approve the $200 donation to Skills USA?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the donation request of $200 for Skills USA, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so that motion carries. I didn't see anything under miscellaneous, so any miscellaneous public comments, chief of significance? Somebody find that?
If I couldn't move it, this aid, we were very, very much aware of the traffic issue on the bridge, the hallway. I have been in communication with. I have been in communication with DNOT daily. There are recommendations coming from a lot of different directions that are very much valid, and DNOT's well aware of them. So I'm thinking, I think within a matter of weeks, congestion is going to be cut more in half because people are going to learn to reroute other directions. But DNOT is very much aware of the congestion on professional, it's driving the tracks and the distraction. Also, the construction on Riverside, right there at Hubble Hill, that was a $2.6 million They will be placed, I think it was the 27th of March, they'll be setting up sign this day, because that will not be a total closure at one lane. What I want to remind the Council of, that was back then, close to $10 million in grants that the town receives. Today's value of those projects is real well more than that. It's all okay.
Thanks, Todd. So next, we're going to move on to council comments.
So I got a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, space so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, space so by saying nay. Meeting adjourned.